The July 22, 2014 zoning board of appeals to order. The first order of business is to approve the minutes of June 24, 2014.
Move to approve.
Anybody second the motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion to approve the minutes of June 24, 2014? Okay, all in favor? So that is six, nothing. All right, moving on to old business. The one item of old business we have today is to hear the request of Mark Toothacre to have renewed proceedings regarding his variance application that was unanimously approved on December 11, 2013. The subject property is Two Wheeler Road, MAP U-16, Lot 1. Actually, before we get to that, I just wanted to note, at the last meeting, somebody had expressed some concern about the availability of the documents that have been submitted to the board relating to the hearing. And we have a copy of the documents that the board has up here, and we will have a copy of that at every meeting. And also, they are, of course, available at Town Hall prior to the meetings. Just wanted to let everybody know that. And with that, we will move on to the old business with Mark Toothacre. Ben, can you give the board some background regarding where this matter stands now?
Yeah. At the December meeting, Mr. Toothacre's variance was approved. The day after the variance was approved, his builder came into Town Hall and was very excited to start the project, wanted his permit quickly. So I processed the certificate of variance, relayed all the information to his builder, and then, for one reason or another, that information did not get to Mr. Toothacre, and he was not aware that he had 90 days to register his variance.
And then, of course, the variance was not issued, it was not registered within 90 days?
And the variance was not registered within 90 days, therefore, it is expired.
Okay. Mr. Toothacre?
Can I ask Ben a question?
Yeah.
Do you know off the top of your head what triggers the 90 days? Is it your processing or our vote?
I don't know.
Do you know what section that is? Sorry.
1953E. That's page 52. It says within 90 days of final approval.
But they have to report their certificate of variance.
Right.
And that final approval is the board's action? Or E?
I would assume the final approval would be the board's action, based on the context. It doesn't say specifically.
1954. Okay, Mr. Toothacre?
Mark Toothacre, Two Wheeler Road. I appreciate you guys letting me come back again. Extenuating circumstances stopped us from continuing with the project. As a letter that I hope you all have explains, public format like this, I'd rather not discuss those extenuating circumstances. But I will say that the contractor never relayed to me the information that he and Ben had talked about. He didn't have my permission to come up here and talk to Ben to get things rolling. I told him I was going to do that. We delayed until spring, once everything was squared around. Better situation than we had at the time. And that's when I found out, and it was too late by then.
Did the contractor bring you the certificate of variance?
No.
So you never received that from the contractor? Or from, and you wouldn't have mailed a copy to the applicant directly?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
And talking with the contractor, he didn't take any of the paperwork with him. He just inquired about it. I never received any notice or any paperwork concerning that. Had I known, I worked there, you know, it would have been just a matter of, you know, taking the paperwork with me to work and having it processed and bringing it to Ben.
So do we still have the certificate of variance? Or does the contractor have that?
We have it. I produced the certificate, and then he said, "Well, I don't want to do that. I will tell Mr. Toothacre to come down right away and do that." And then, we have this filing area for where people are going to, where people say they're going to come back and do something. We just pop something up there, and it just gathered dust up there for 90 days. And I assumed that Mr. Toothacre had, you know, come in and picked it up, and just the way the contractor was acting, that he was so desperate to get going on this project, it just, you know, it didn't cross my mind that it was, that that oversight was occurring.
And had the contractor not come in the day after the hearing, what would your normal course of business, what actions would you have taken?
I would have mailed the certificate of variance to the Toothacres and made them aware that their variance was approved, and they have 90 days to register it.
And that's typically what the procedure is. I mean, most people then do get a formal notice from you that their variance was approved, and then they have 90 days to file the registry.
Yeah, that is, that's standard procedure. About half the time, people are, when they get their variance and they had been waiting for it, so they are antsy, and so they are coming in to pick it up by hand and speak with me personally. So about half the time, it's just a personal conversation and a handoff, and they get it right back. And the other half the time, it would get mailed with directions.
And presumably, the half, half the time, they come into the office. Sometimes it's the homeowner, sometimes it's the builder.
Correct.
Which just varies.
Yeah.
And then, when they come into the office, you then don't send out a notice?
Right. It's a notarized certificate with a raised stamp on it, so there's not multiple copies.
And again, just to reiterate this, so once the contractor came in in this particular case, you put it in kind of an inbox, awaiting Mr. Toothacre to come in to pick it up?
Correct.
And Mr. Toothacre, can you just go into a little bit more detail of what happened with your builder? Did you terminate your relationship with him?
No, I did not. He called, and actually, he was at the meeting that night, in the appeals meeting. And we had talked on the way out the door, and I told him that we probably weren't going to start until April. And he left, I think, that following weekend to go home to start building through the winter for his mother, which is in Callis or Cal, I don't know how they pronounce it. So he knew. I didn't know, you know, and I have talked to him since. And he did tell me that he failed to relay that information to me. And I didn't even know he was coming up here to do that.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Any public comment? Hearing no public comment, I'd like to open it up for board discussion.
So do we have effectively two findings, separate findings of fact? One is, are we renewing the proceedings?
Yeah, let me, yes. Right now, and I guess I wasn't clear, or we weren't, but right now, we're discussing, and the argument that we heard from Mr. Toothacre, and the discussion we heard from Ben, was whether or not to renew the proceedings. And before we renew the proceedings, we need to decide whether or not to do so. If we decide to renew the proceedings, then we will get to the underlying substantive issues of the grant, of whether or not to grant the variance. So I think the discussion now should focus on the request to renew.
1953D decision procedures says that the board shall cause written notice of its decision to be provided to the applicant within seven days of the board's decision. Kind of the second-to-last full sentence in that subpart D. It sounds to me like, in this case, that didn't happen. And that that might be sufficient error, in my mind, that it is worth kind of renewing and re-going over the same proceedings, based on the same record that we have previously?
Yeah, I mean, I could potentially even get there through 153, 1953E, where we have some, where changes taking place in some essential aspect of the case sufficient to warrant consideration. I mean, so, I mean, I guess I'm satisfied between, I mean, personally, I'm satisfied between the language that Joanna just read and Ben's explanation that this is something that I think we should consider reviewing again.
I would agree. I mean, I think certainly the language that Joanna cited, written notice of the decision was not provided to the applicant within seven days. I think it's clear. I mean, I don't think we would be here had written notice been provided to the applicant. Does anybody like to make a motion?
I'm on board. I agree with you as well. I guess we would move to, I'll look for input on wording in the motion, but I guess we would move to reconsider Mark Toothacre's application for Two Wheeler Road.
I'll second it.
All in favor? So the motion is approved, six, nothing. Let me just, so this was a motion, the motion that was granted was to have renewed proceedings regarding the variance application that was unanimously approved on December 11, 2013. So having approved the motion to renew the proceedings, now we'll move on to the renewed proceedings. And I think before we invite Mr. Toothacre back up, the issue at the last meeting was whether or not we were going to have a full renewed proceedings, and basically, here, you know, argument starting from the very beginning with respect to the variance, or whether or not the members of the board who were on the board as of December and at the meeting in December could basically, I don't know if it's renewed.
Reaffirm.
Reaffirm, re-grant, renew the issuance of the variance. I don't think we really reached a conclusion or a decision as to what, how we would approach this procedurally, now that we have agreed for a renewed, for a renewed hearing. So I think that's a discussion we have to have amongst the board, and it's just a board decision. Mike?
My opinion is, where it is renewed, I think we probably need to reconsider, to consider it de novo, because basically, state law concludes that the prior decision was void or voided. All of that being said, we have a very complete application here. I believe that notice went out to abutting landowners, so my suspicion is that that reconsideration, that renewal can be dispensed with hopefully relatively quickly, so long as there isn't any new information that comes to light as part of the public process.
And are the December 13 minutes a part of the record?
Toothacre, yeah, of course.
I think that that makes sense, and I agree with that. I think that there were also only four of us here. Four, were there, in December, were there, was it only four of us that are here, or were you here already?
January made me mad.
Yeah. And I think we need four votes to support the variance, so that would mean that it had to be, it just creates kind of a higher standard if we do it the other way, because it would mean that it would require a unanimous vote. Because there's only four of us, he would need four.
Right, to renew.
Yeah. So I think we should just hear it afresh, yeah.
Okay. I don't think we need to take a vote on that. I think the decision is to hear it fresh. Mr. Toothacre, I mean, we have some new board members, I mean, and they have their, they have your submission for this hearing. And if you'd like to just kind of give us another summary of the variance that you're requesting, and the reasons for the variance. Thank you.
My wife and I requested that we were allowed to build a 12 by 27-foot sunroom on the back of the house facing Two Lights Road. About 10 years ago, we had the house picked up and moved, situated where it was, and have slowly been refurbishing it as we could afford. We're getting close to retirement now, and this is the last step in the process. And I don't have the paperwork in front of me. I didn't bring it with me, but that's basically the request.
And if you, we actually have an extra copy, if you want, to, just for your reference on that chair, while we discuss this, if the board has any questions, I might help you to refer to.
Was it the east, the kind of northeast corner of the sunroom? And how much of that was in the setback? And isn't it also the case that it is far less encroachment than the historic location of the house?
Yes, it is. That was discussed at the last meeting. And we ended up, when we placed the house, when we picked it up and moved it, not using the amount that they allowed for us. So the actual amount that we need now is less than what's on the paper.
We received no comments, kind of?
Correct.
Do you know the neighbors that live across from you on Two Lights Road? There's two houses that are set back into the woods. Do you know who they are?
It would be Judy, lives diagonally across the street from us. David Schuman lives across the road from us.
And how far would you say that those people live, from their house to where you wish to have the sunroom? How many feet do you think that would be?
Oh, my.
Over 200?
Yeah, that's a long way.
And one of the homes has many trees. It's almost natural state, if you will.
Right.
Okay. And the other property that's behind you, that's, I think, the Maxwell Farm, is that right? And there's a pond?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Mr. Toothacre.
Thank you.
Any board discussion? I'm sorry, any public comment on the substantive request for a variance? Hearing no public comment, board discussion?
It sounds like Mr. Toothacre met the criteria last time. I don't see any reason for that decision to change, and I guess it strikes me that the board probably ought to approve the renewed application.
Yeah, I mean, I was here when we approved it, and I certainly heard nothing that could change my mind.
I agree.
Yeah, I'm comfortable that he meets the standards in the ordinance, as well as explained in the application. See no red flags here.
Anybody like to make a motion?
Chair, I have a point of order.
Yes.
Is this for the purposes of going through the criteria, or a motion to actually approve the application and go through the criteria? Reason that I, I just wanted to check the section in the ordinance, whether it says "shall," the board shall, and that means that even though there's a willingness to expedite process, I'd just double-check that.
And where are we looking at? 1954? 52?
B, I believe.
Wrong page. Sorry?
48.
And you're just speaking, speaking to the language that the zoning board shall consider if the variance would have the effect of blocking an established view, posing a fire, safety hazard, et cetera?
Yes.
I mean...
I guess the point is that we've all focused our attention on that section of the ordinance. We're content with it, and we can proceed. I just want to make sure that we've actually considered that relevant portion.
Yeah, I mean, I, we certainly considered it in December, and...
We incorporate by reference that, that record?
Absolutely. Yeah, and the minutes from that record and the December record. Okay. Would you like to make a motion to approve? Any motion?
I move that we approve the variance request for MAP U-16, Lot 1, at Two Wheeler Road, owned by Mr. Mark and Ms. Wendy Toothacre.
All those in favor? Okay, the variance has been approved. Now, in terms of finding of fact, variance request is, findings of fact, one, variance request for MAP U-16, Lot 1, Two Wheeler Road, applicant Mark Toothacre. Two, Mark Toothacre is the owner of record of MAP U-16, Lot 1, Two Wheeler Road. Three, Two Wheeler Road is a non-conforming lot in the RA District. Required setbacks are 30 feet from Wheeler Road, 40 feet from Two Lights Road, and 20 feet on the remaining rear property line. In order to construct an addition on the side rear of the house, the applicant is requesting a variance that allows a set back. a variance that allows a setback of 14 feet on the Two Lights Road side of the property. The variance request was approved by the zoning board on December 11th, 2013, but the variance certificate was not recorded at the Registry of Deeds within 90 days, so the variance granted on December 11th, 2013 is no longer valid.
Can we add to that, but we incorporate the record from those proceedings into this record?
Yes, uh, we, number six, uh, the board incorporates the record of, the record from the December 11th, 2013 zoning board meeting, um, into today's record. This additional finding, I think this relates to our previous, um, the previous motion, but the zoning board has considered the request as a renewed proceeding because the applicant has demonstrated that there was a mistake of law or misunderstanding of fact, and injustice was done. And conclusion, there is no substantial departure from the intent of the ordinance, and a literal enforcement of the ordinance would cause a practical difficulty as defined by 30 AMR SA, section 4353, 4C. Any other findings of fact? Conclusions? Okay, all in favor of those? Six, nothing. Thank you, Mr. Toothaker. Okay, moving on to the new business before the board, uh, the next item is to hear the request of Ann Crenshaw, the owner of the property at Two Star Road, map U-22, lot 5, to reconstruct and expand a deck based on section 1943B3 of the zoning ordinance. Ben, can you just give us a quick background, please?
Yes, uh, Mrs. Crenshaw came in, uh, six or eight weeks ago wanting to, uh, reconstruct a small deck on the side of her house. She wanted to expand the deck, and, and based on the information I had in front of me, it looked like the deck was within the side setback, so we researched a little more. It did turn out to be the case, so I informed her that she would need a zoning board approval to, in order to expand that. And, uh... Yeah.
Okay. All right, Ms. Crenshaw?
Oh, and one other point, she's, she's not getting closer to the property line than existing structure. There it is.
Thank you, Ben, thanks all of you. Ann Crenshaw, my husband Doug is also here with me tonight. And as Ben said, we would like to, um, get permission to, uh, reconstruct this deck and enlarge it at the same time. I think, for me, a visual is always very helpful. If you go kind of towards the back, I think it's the, maybe the third page from the back, the application, where I included a couple of photos. Um, the top photo is of the original deck. That is, it is 10 feet in front of the slider, four feet deep, um, with another half of that devoted to some pretty large steps. Not a very useful size, and it has rotted, so it's even less useful than it was. The, what we'd like to do is to increase the size of that, so it will make it, uh, more practical, a more practical use, which would increase our enjoyment of the property, and we believe it'd also cre, increase the value of the property. My understanding is that the, um, from Ben, is that we have a 10-foot setback and, um, in our unconforming neighborhood on the side, and that, um, it, we have the corner, if you look at the, actually, if you look at the second picture, that, um, the two, two trees right there in the foreground, you can see in the back, um, where the deck is located, those two trees, um, actually are not owned by us, um, because that is the, that is the corner of the garage where that little shrub is to the right of the trees, and it's about, about four feet from the property line, which must have been approved before we even purchased the house. So, the deck that, that we would like to build as a replacement, um, does not even, it, it, it stays within the distance that the original deck did, but you say we've kind of angled it. What page is that? That's right after the application. Well, it's just one page back, actually, two pages back, one page back from the photographs. We've angled it so that it will, um, respect, um, the existing, the setback from the existing deck. Made the steps smaller, so we get more usable space. I think that one of the important things to know is that, um, even though we're very close on that side to the property line, um, there is a strip of land, that's on the west side of the property, that when we purchased the house, we believed on, it said on our deed was town prop, town-owned property. At some point, it was, uh, transferred to our neighbors to the west, Brentwood West Association, and this strip is about 40 feet deep, so from our west property line, where we're talking about the deck, it's 40 feet until you reach the rear property lines of our closest abutting neighbors in Brentwood, and their houses are in bigger lots and sit either in the middle of the lot or a little closer to the road. I have talked to, um, many neighbors focusing on the ones to the west and right around us, and I have not heard any objections, um, from anyone, any concerns, um, most importantly, from those, those abutting neighbors, um, in, in Brentwood. They have no problems at all. We can, we can barely see them this time of year with the leaves on those trees. So, that, I think, is an important thing to note.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Crenshaw?
Will the, um, end of the stairs essentially be at the corner of the white part of the structure?
No, it doesn't come that far down. Let's see, if you look on the, um, the one before that, do you see, which, which is kind of like the, the plot, the plot plan from our mortgage? You see where it says, the driveway, we actually, the line actually crosses the corner of our driveway even, but see where it says four feet there to the garage? And you can see that the deck doesn't even come close to that.
Yeah, so it's more like kind of where the cars...
They pretty much, actually, the steps are going to pretty much end right where that, where the garage begins.
Yeah, basically where that first drainpipe is, not the furthest, the closest one in, but the second one.
Which one, say it again, please?
Sorry, on this second picture?
Yes.
On the close, the near corner of the garage?
Yes.
You can see a downspout, and then you can kind of see another one further in that looks like it's in between the house and the garage?
That's, yes.
Kind of roughly there?
That's right. It would be in, in, much closer to that one in the back, yes. The steps might come a little bit into the garage area, but the deck would end before the, before the garage begins, and the white part is actually, where the white siding is, that's actually the garage.
I have a question as well. Um, on this page of the application, that, where it talks about the paper street, um, where does the, it's called Dearborn Drive, is the paper street?
Yes.
And does it go straight to the back, or does it loop to the right behind your property?
Does the, Dearborn, Dearborn Drive comes here, and then you, it takes a right turn on Star Road. The street doesn't actually go through, but yes, it does say that originally that was supposed to be an extension of Dearborn Drive.
Yes.
And it, I'm assuming it would have been that 40-foot strip right here along the edge of our west boundary, is where they would have put a road.
Let's assume that it just goes straight. So, who, how far away is the home on the northern side of your lot?
How far are they?
Yes.
How far is there? I'd say their home is another, what would you say, Doug? Another good 10 feet to the Tripler's home, at least, I would say.
Yeah.
Well, it's... Well, ours is, ours is a little closer, ours is closer than that, but from, they do have a fence there, and they, um, you know, one of those stockade fences, it's about like this, and they, the way the land goes, there's, it dips down a bit, so they're actually a little lower than we are, and because of the way that our house is set on the property and their house is in this area, um, I wish I had a, the plot map. The only way they would be able to see our deck is if they went into their far corner to the west and peeked over the fence.
Could you estimate, so that we can use it for the record, how many feet their physical house is from that corner of your house?
From the corner of our house? I'd say 25 feet.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Crenshaw?
On the notice, there is a little plan that shows the location of the house in relation to the other houses, and it looks like you're probably being, um, it, it looks to me like it's probably more than 25. It looks like there's a good gap there.
A conservative estimate, I guess.
Yes. Knowing that this little gap on this corner is eight feet, and this little gap on this corner is four feet, it looks like it's...
Could we take board discretion to estimate how much that would be?
Knowing that that's eight? The one's at the north.
Actually, be 20 feet anyways, so that, could that be an assumption?
It looks to me like it could be 40 feet, or, or more, I mean, it's, it's a ways.
It's a distance.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I measured it at about 40.
I have no more questions. Any other questions from the board, from Ms. Crenshaw? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Excuse me. No public comment. Board discussion?
Excuse me, has, has there been any public comment that you've received by email?
Yeah, I, I received several positive emails that supported the application, most of which I forwarded to the board.
Thank you. It's in the packet?
And that, uh, is it in the packet? It's not in the packet.
Forwarded by email, but it hasn't been printed out to add to the file, but it would be in the file.
Yes.
It'll be part of the record.
Thank you.
All right, so the, the public comment that Ben has received via email is incorporated by reference into the file. Any board discussion? I think we've heard sufficient testimony, and the record is complete, um, insofar as it, it addresses all of the criteria that we need to consider, um, for the granting of the request. Somebody have a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the application of reconstruction, uh, of residence at, uh, Two Star Road, map U-22 lot 5.
Somebody second?
I'll second.
All right, China? All those in favor? Six, nothing. Findings of fact, this is a request of Ann Crenshaw to rebuild and enlarge deck attached to a nine, non-conforming structure based on section 1943B3 of the zoning ordinance. Two, the subject property is Two Star Road, map U-22 lot 5. Douglas and Ann Crenshaw are the owners of record for the subject property. Two, I'm sorry, three, Two Star Road is a non-conforming lot in the RC zone. There is currently a non-conforming single fam, family dwelling on the lot. Additional findings, one, the zoning board of appeals has considered the size of the lot, the slope of the land, the potential for soil erosion, the location of other structures on the property and on adjacent properties, the location of the septic system and other on-site soils suitable for septic systems, the impact on views and the type and amount of vegetation to be removed to accomplish the relocation. Two, the proposed structure will not increase the non-conformity of the existing structure. Three, the proposed, the proposed structure is in compliance with the setback requirements to the greatest practical extent. Any other additional findings? All in favor of the findings of fact and additional findings of fact? Six, nothing. Thank you. The next item of new business is number two. To hear the request of Sylvain and Savini Builders to enclose and expand an existing stairwell at 18 Smugglers Cove Road, map U-10 lot 42, based on section 1944 of the zoning ordinance. The existing house location and expansion was approved by the zoning board on February 22nd, 2005. Ben, can you give us a quick background, please?
Sure, uh, the zoning board approved, uh, rebuilding and expansion of this house in 2005. Several months ago, Mr. Savini, uh, called me, asked me to do a site visit at the house. There was extensive water damage at the house, and, uh, he was repairing the water damage, and part of the water damage was caused by a stairwell. There's, there's a large roof deck on top of this house, and there's a stairwell going up to the roof deck. It's the open, open to the sky, and that was one of the sources of water damage, and in order to remedy that, he wanted, wants to enclose that stairwell up, up to the, up to the roof deck. It, uh, it, it's cantilevered, it, it's not entirely evident on, on these pages where the addition is. It's there.
Are you looking the back elevation? Sorry?
Yeah, back elevations, but it's, uh, the tall windows where you see stairs through the windows, and, and right now, there's no roof on that, the stairs are there, and, and you walk up, but it's open air, so basically, they want to, they want to put that roof on in order to protect the stairs, and in order to, and, and in order to make the stairs wide enough, they're cantilevering towards you, and relative to that picture, uh, two feet out from the structure. So, there's a, so there's a 10-square-foot footprint expansion due to that two-foot cantilever.
So, right now, there are stairs that go up from the ground floor or from the second floor?
From the second floor.
And below it is kind of living space that is, that has stairs on top of it, but is otherwise open to the elements?
Uh, the stairs are open to the elements, and there's a wall there, so there's sort of a bathtub effect.
Yeah.
There is, there is a wall beside the stairs, and it's just, it's, it's not a great design, and so the, the rain gets in there, and it has a hard time getting out, and, and there is living space directly below, the, the first floor living space is directly... And there is living space directly below, the first-floor living space is directly below those stairs that are open to the elements.
So right now, the stairs are enclosed on all sides, but they're not covered?
Correct.
There's no roof? Okay. And you walk out from the interior portion of the house out onto like a landing area before you get to the stairs?
Yes. Yeah, you walk from the second floor. There's a door that goes into the stairs.
Which is, right now, that's kind of outside?
And that's outside. You walk through a door to the outside and then you're walking open air upward.
But enclosed on all sides?
Yes.
Okay. With a window on the side?
So like an elevator shaft, but with no cap on top, just open?
Yes.
Is that depicted on this site plan from 2005, which is the last page in the application package? Or is this, was this what was proposed in 2005? And presumably, you don't?
There's no detail on the site plan. I mean, his application shows where it's located.
Okay, so something has been drawn on here to, this box that might be hand-drawn on here, is that? Let's see.
Yes. It's not labeled.
Okay. So is that what we're talking about?
It's that.
Oh, I see, so it's...
The larger square is a first-floor deck. So that would be the two-foot cantilever by 10 feet wide. It's partially over the first-floor deck.
That small bump out right there. And it's entirely within that 75-foot? Setback from?
Yes, the cantilevered portion is entirely within the 75 feet. Not the whole, the whole thing isn't, the whole stairwell. Probably two-thirds of the stairwell is within 75 feet and a third of it is outside of 75 feet.
Any further questions for Ben?
I guess I'm just not totally understanding, sorry.
Let me get the applicant up and...
Yeah, yeah, I guess I'm just confused on what the changes are to the setbacks.
Yeah, why don't, sir, yeah.
Great, thank you. My name's Josh Savini. And so basically, you know, I don't have a lot of information for you because these are basic sketches. We've spent from January, when I first brought Ben out to the house, until about, you know, three or four weeks ago, repairing about $200,000 worth of rot damage associated with the original design. So the homeowner lives out of state. She comes up here periodically. She's very busy with work. And she came up, we hired an architect, Kevin Brown, who's very good. But he, this was a preliminary sketch thing that he put together. And we had a meeting and she was like, "I like the design. This is great." So then I went to go see Ben and he's like, "Well, the zoning board application has to be in in three hours, so here I am and this is why, this is what I have for you and not anything with any more detail." But basically, what she's trying to do right now, the staircase, if we were just trying to keep it in the configuration that was there, what we had to work with and just put a cap on it, it wouldn't give us an enclosed staircase that would be built to code. So that's kind of why we're infringing and just building this small cantilever is to allow us to get, you know, a minimum of 36 inches in the stairway. So basically, it's just a really bad design that failed miserably since the day the house was built. You know, the whole thing structurally has been replaced on that side of the house in regards to the damage that occurred from this. So, you know, it's basically trying to work within this. We know that we were, there wasn't a lot of room for expansion. So this was the one way that Kevin could come up with something that was aesthetically pleasing that also allowed everything to meet current building codes and further this damage from not happening again, obviously. Because she spent a great deal of money on the home and had three home inspections done, you know. And everything, there was damage there that had been covered up. And so it really was quite a nightmare for her to discover it. She's handled it very well. But it's, you know, so we're just trying to come up with a solution where she can get to her rooftop deck to enjoy it without her spending a ton, I mean, she spent a serious amount of money to make these repairs. So, you know, that's one thing that we kept in mind going forward with this. And why we've only gone this far with the drawings as well at this point is just because, you know, she is on a budget as well and getting this stuff done and approved. So that way, she can move on and move to Maine.
And I think I know where Joanna was going with her question before. You're wondering why this is here?
Yeah.
In front of you.
Yeah.
And the reasoning behind that is because a specific design was approved by the zoning board in 2005. It took views into consideration and many things into consideration. So my interpretation is that if anybody wants to further expand, that would be up to the zoning board because they'd be expanding beyond what they originally approved. If there wasn't a zoning board approval on this house and they came in with this project, it would be a code officer approval, just verifying the shoreline expansion rules.
And what was the underlying approval? Was it an approval of a variance in the shoreline overlay district or was it just kind of a general approval?
It was reconstruction, relocation in the shoreline overlay. It wasn't a variance.
Okay.
They didn't get close to the ocean. I have all the paperwork, the full approval here. John Mitchell was the consultant that did the original approval. And he crunched all the numbers for the 30% expansion in there. And there was a little bit of area and volume left of the 30%. So the original approval is very, very detailed.
And basically for the complete rebuilding of the house?
Yes.
And so we're essentially talking about an increase of about 27 feet if I'm... Given the existing floor area that's... ...first proposed. 2015, 2016 versus 2088?
Yes.
Just trying to stand the...
So 27.
27 feet.
Yes, that's what is indicated.
Okay, so the cantilever is, it's going a little higher, it looks like. Is that, I assume, you need to put a cap on it?
Is that not there now?
That's correct.
The windows, this is not?
The windows and the roof are not there. It's basically a railing, a rail height going across. Well, no, it's a little taller than that. How tall is that section right now?
The section where that wall is, it's about, the railings are actually being lowered on the rooftop deck portion. This, we're about four feet below the, this new portion is about four feet below that cubicle-type structure that's on the roof.
But what is the overall height increase, right in that portion of the stairs?
It's two and a half feet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Two and a half feet from the existing roof line to the right. So if you're looking at the picture with the cantilevered section, that section over it is two and a half feet tall.
This is the one that says front elevation?
Back elevation. The back elevation and front elevation, that's the same peak.
And looking at the back elevation now, is there a window here now?
Is there, no. Right now, there's nothing there. It's wide open with two-by-fours going across it because the whole thing was completely rotten.
But what was here before?
A wall. Solid wall.
Solid wall.
Yeah.
Up to this peak?
Basically, it was about, above that roof line, it was 47 inches above the rubber roof line where...
Above the roof line with the railing?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's just a wall straight up?
Yes.
Okay.
Above which roof line?
Above the flat roof line.
So we're looking at the front elevation here?
Back. I was looking at the back.
I'm looking at the back.
The back elevation.
I guess I just want to be, okay, so we're looking at the back elevation.
I think it was 47 inches from there.
Okay.
So the existing roof line is then basically at the foot of the columns that are depicted on the back elevation drawing?
Yes.
Okay. And there is basically just a privacy wall there?
Yeah.
And that was, I'm sorry?
Yeah, and prior, there was a post about every eight inches. And at every single one of those posts, they didn't flash it. So when we opened the roof up in this house, the whole thing was completely rotten. I mean, it was not a pretty sight, it was not a pretty sight at all. So this whole wall was actually compromised. The whole thing has structurally been rebuilt. You know, we pulled the windows out, put them back in in a few different areas because the headers were completely gone. So she's just trying to, you know, we're putting this back together for her so that way she can move on, basically. She bought the house last year and she has, you know, she's not going to be living there before November, probably, at this point.
So from a visual impact standpoint, perhaps safe to say it's going to look a little bit better than it did with just a plain wall?
Yes. Yeah, visually, it should really, this wall was kind of, I mean, for all the windows and you turn around and the ocean's behind you, so it's beautiful. But looking at it before, it was kind of just bland. So this kind of, it's not going to aesthetically hurt the house at all. And that's what, you know, Kevin was trying to accomplish is to do this. We also wanted to make the house look a little bit nicer for her at the same time. Instead of spending all that money and your house looks exactly to a T the way it did prior. You know, there was a couple bands that they put in the house that they didn't flash properly and those all rotted. And, I mean, we had to re-side the entire home in nine years, so, you know.
And the sitting room roof, of course, is still, was there before, it's obviously there now?
Yep. Everything, the only thing that we're adding is just, and the whole reason for the bump out portion is to get a staircase that's to code, that, you know, is enclosed and safe. So instead of walking out on the second story and walking up a set of stairs on a landing, up another set of stairs and onto the roof, that's going to be completely enclosed and you're going to walk out a door and onto a roof.
And when you say bump out, it's pumping out in the back?
Yeah, pumping out towards the ocean side of the home.
So where that new window is?
Yeah.
It's coming out?
Right.
Just that part?
Yep, just that part of it.
Is there, Ben, is there any comment from butters or anything like that?
I have not had comments from butters. I've had inquiries, but no comments.
Where this is and where it's located, it really should play no effect on anybody's views or anything. The house across the street is, you know, the houses around it are substantially shorter, except for the house directly across the street. But it's not going to really change, it's not towards the ocean. Where this is, is back off the ocean.
Is there, the neighbor across the street, I'm looking at the neighborhood map, if you will. Is that their, yeah, I guess that's, their front view is looking out over your client?
Their what?
Their front door, if you will, is looking out over your clients?
Yeah.
Sure. The neighbors directly across the street did come in and review the application and did not make any formal comments, positive or negative.
Any other questions for Mr. Savini?
I have a question for Ben, so invite him back. This has only come up because of the early application with Mr. Two Thinker. Has the applicant, has the builder, has the owner of the property communicated to the town that they have a relationship with the applicant?
No.
Okay. I only raise this in the doubting the applicant. I just want to make sure that we will be receiving something so that when we instruct, when we make a decision and we tell the applicant that they have seven days after the hearing, that this is the answer, that that person then does something. We heard earlier that the builder was the applicant way back when, didn't communicate something to the owner. I wanted to avoid a potential problem that there's no wiggle room for our authority and also the applicant. So on the applicant, the application itself, maybe this is a change in the future then. Something, an assertion that this person represents the owner of the land or something like that. So right now, we have in front of us an application signed by the builder. It's more of an, arguably a technical, but I perceive is a continuity issue.
Yeah, on our building permit application, what you're saying is a good idea. On our building permit application, underneath the signature line, it states that by signing here, I am attesting that I am authorized to act on behalf of this property. And that wouldn't be a bad idea to have on this application. We could go a step further and have them submit a form that the owner of the property formally signs a form authorizing this person to represent them. That would be a step further. But in this case, if this is approved, the owner of the property will be mailed a notice of zoning board approval.
And this is in a variance such that any recording requirements are triggered, right?
Correct.
Any other questions for Mr. Savini? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Yes, sir. Can you please step up to the podium? Thank you.
Not really a comment, but Mike explained it and I just was here just to find out whether the cantilever was going over the street side or the water side or where. So you've explained it's on the water side, so, fine with us.
Thank you. And we haven't received any other email or comments from the public?
No.
Are we, I know we're, we're in board discussions, yeah. Have we moved on to that?
We've now moved on to board discussions? Let's discuss.
So are we, if we are to approve this, are we approving it based upon these drawings? Or is there going to be a final drawing of the redone of the cantilever?
Oh, they, they are, they are going to have architectural drawings done. And, you know, how the board wants to do this approval, if they're not completely comfortable with the drawings, you could, uh, you could do a verbal description of what's approved.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I just, at some point, I want, I want you to see some architectural drawings.
Yeah, there's, there will be architectural drawings before the building permits issued.
John, is the issue the height, the width?
For me, it's, it, anytime I see something going up on Water View, I always get a little, you know, I just ask a couple of questions, you know. A butters, it's nice that we have a, Mr. Gent here-
Yes.
-who lives in the neighborhood. He doesn't seem to be having too much idiom over it, but, you know, we, we certainly haven't seen enough applications of various types before here where views have been impacted.
I do recall last fall, I think there was an application where this house had big structures on either side and they wanted to fill the middle a bit in. And there was a huge uproar as to whether that was appropriate. I take your point. Um, we struggled as to what it is that we have to approve here, the shape, the physical shape of this roof line.
Right, which is why I asked whether we were going to approve this based upon what I like to call the artist's rendering. You know, it's very, you know, very nice pictures, I just-
No, it doesn't, it doesn't have any measurements.
Exactly.
He did, uh, he did say that the new roof line will go two and a half feet higher than the adjacent roof line.
Yeah, and I think this just gets back to what you said earlier, that, you know, we even need to put some guidelines on, you know, we need to put some parameters around what the, what the final plan is going to look like, even though I'm kind of sitting here scratching my head saying, is that really our, our job? But, you know, I think so, so long as we understand what it is we're approving and we can put some parameters around that so that when, you know, you have the architect plans, then you can verify it and I, you know, I mean, again, I'm not trying to prejudge the application, but, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that, but I just, um, you know, normally we do have the architectural plans and we're, when we're looking at stuff like this.
Yeah, I think that's a point as well taken. I think when, when I hear that we're kind of rushing to get something on paper so we can come before the board and we don't have architectural plans, I, I think generally it seems okay what they are looking to do, but I do have some concerns over what the final plans will be and making sure that if, if we get to the point where we're approving this, that we're approving, that we know what we're approving and we're approving something specific enough that Ben can make sure that the plans are in compliance with what we proved.
So, so the question is, do we have enough to provide some guidance for approval? Or, or would we rather just see the final architect drawings as part of, you know, the final package for approval?
I don't know how to answer that question, so let me ask this question hopefully in reply. Let's assume that this house is brand new and it has to be built. And we're, most, all of us are content with almost everything, but this, this portion above the stairs is at issue. If it was currently submitted, would it be within the ordinance, this, this thing here? In other words, if this is just a, um, a greenfield lot and they wanted to submit this, this plan, and is there anything that catches our attention? And, and if, what is that issue? And the sec- or should we not go down that road because we're only looking at a particular spot, which is that, the new cantilevered roof portion?
I mean, that would seem to be going back to the original approval back in two thousand and five.
Yes.
And we're, we'd be applying the same factors to our approval. The size of the lot, the slope of the land, the potential for soil erosion, and most of these don't necessarily apply because now the house has already been built and this is just basically enclosing, enclosing the stairwell with a roof that's going up.
Which is what, whether the sitting room roof?
Yeah, yeah.
But, but when it was before the board in two thousand and five, they had measurements of a house that was being built. We don't have measurements for this. We don't have a specific plan other than the picture and the general description. So that's the difference.
I guess that the point is that if the, as-built house without the cantilevered roof, it does not require a variance? And if you add the new roof and it doesn't require a variance, then it should be greenlighted?
It shouldn't what?
It should, it should be approved. Because we have enough, and we're working backwards essentially, is that the outside skin of the house, built, didn't require a variance or any change? I'm not sure why, um-
Well, it's in the shoreline, I mean, they're reconstructing this house.
Then that's, I think that's the focus then. So what aspect of that, and whether that would be caught, whether the new roof line would be caught by the overlay that you just talked about?
But it is not, because the numbers that they've submitted are still within the thirty percent, which would have been around.
And presumably if they, if the final numbers were outside of the thirty percent, it would not be approved by Ben.
Well, this predates construction.
Yeah.
I guess I am struggling also with, personally with not having a kind of image of what it looks like now or what it looked like previously and then under the two thousand and five approval and then kind of here's what it's going to look like. That is a little bit of a struggle for me without having kind of, you know, I'm imagining that it's kind of this area that's new, but I don't know exactly how much of that is new. But I personally would be comfortable with Ben confirming that the final plans are consistent with what we've heard here tonight and kind of going forward from there, assuming that Ben could confirm that and to the extent they're not, then saying that it would have to come back again, I guess.
Well, the plans wouldn't be approved. They could then-
Wouldn't have-
-come up with new plans. Or if they required a variance, then they would have to request a variance from the board.
I mean, I think that's what we always do, isn't it, in a way? I mean, we say, yes, we're giving you this approval and then Ben issues a building permit, essentially saying, yes, this is consistent with the approval, or it isn't?
Yes, except usually we have-
A little bit more information.
Yeah.
I mean, in essence, we're going to say something like, okay, the roof line can't be more than two and a half feet, you know, above the existing roof line, or the cantilever can't be more than two and a half feet above the existing roof line. And you can't, and the overall total per footage can't be above-
What you've said in the application.
What I said there, and the volume obviously, like code has to be, or my ordinance has to be below thirty percent. That's, I mean, that's in essence what you're going to put in the finding of fact, right?
Or in the, I mean, motion would be.
Or in the motion.
That would be right up front, right?
I just have a clarif- hopefully a clarifying point. Has Ben made a decision on something that the builders have done or is about to do? If Ben hasn't made a decision, then I don't think we have jurisdiction. So if they're seeking a variance, then we would have jurisdiction. So what doorway have we gone through to be talking about this application? So I don't believe we're talking about a variance, so that we're not talking, that's not our, before us. Has Ben made a decision on something?
I mean, I think as Ben just explained at the outset, it's before us because the original construction, the original plans in two thousand and five required for an approval because it was a reconstruction of a home in the shoreline zone.
Okay. Have you written a letter and, and that's a part of the file?
No, I haven't. That's, that's how I wrote it up in the findings, as nineteen four three B four.
So I'm thinking the power is still within the code enforcement officer to determine whether whatever is going to be built is within the purview of the original, um, decision back in two thousand and five, subject to, um, what's going to be submitted for the detailed drawings for the building application?
But isn't the problem that they approved very specific plans in two thousand and five that didn't include the enclosure of the stairwell? So he, he didn't approve what is being requested now?
I take that point. I also ta- I rebut saying that some things you don't need approval for. The question is material. And it, it sounds like it's within, um, it doesn't, it doesn't appear to look like it needs a variance. I take John's point that it's more of aesthetic and you want to make sure that people are joining, shaking your head here.
I'm shaking my head and I'm sorry, I think that we're, if you look at pages thirty-seven and thirty-eight of the ordinance, we have jurisdiction in multiple areas. We have jurisdiction when, on appeal of a zoning, of a code enforcement officer decision, that's what you were talking about. We have jurisdiction over variances, that's also what you were talking about, but we also have jurisdiction where there is relocation, reconstruction, uh, or replacement of non-conforming buildings and structures as is set forth on pages thirty-seven and thirty-eight of the ordinance. And that's why this is here, is because the zoning board had to hear and approve the reconstruction, relocation, or replacement of a non-conforming structure in the shoreline zone. So that was kind of the doorway which it came into us by, not just an appeal of the code enforcement officer's decision or variance. Am I getting that right?
Yes, and now a portion of that structure is being, again, reconstructed and expanded.
This is an application for reconstruction. Reconstruction of structure.
Nineteen, is that nineteen four three B?
That's where I was.
More, yeah. Is it B three?
So that, that correction on the, the findings of fact will change?
It would be nineteen four three B, I mean, B four is, there is no B four. Correct?
B three.
Okay.
Okay. Take your point.
Okay, so are, are you?
I'm satisfied.
All right. Uh, any further discussion? Somebody like to make a motion? Should we try to work together to come up with a motion that somebody might like?
Yes, please.
All right. So the motion would be... To-
To reconstruct and enclose an existing-
Well, the motion would be to grant a request, right? Motion to grant a request of, let me just get this in, Sylvain and Sevigny builders representing Candace Warren to rebuild and enclose an existing stairwell on a non-conforming structure in the Shoreland Overlay District based on section nineteen four three B three. Now, yeah, B three. Nineteen four three. That alone doesn't have any-
It's, uh, it's nineteen four four. The four in the-
The four four?
Yeah.
There? Nineteen four four?
Yes.
Nineteen four four B three.
I got the three and the four.
Gotcha, okay. Do we want to add some meat to that?
Yes.
Well, before we do, if you look down in our draft, there's actually some pretty good-
Language.
Yeah. Like, for example, in the F, the findings of facts, um, five in particular.
Do we want to incorporate that language in five into the motion?
I don't know. I can go either way on that, as long as it's in the requirements.
In the requirements.
I think we could put all the finding of facts.
Okay.
You mean, anything we wanted to add?
Yeah.
That's you, I-
No, no, I'm comfortable with that. So, I mean, the motion that we have right now is to grant a request of, um, Sylvain and Sevigny builders representing Candace Warren to rebuild and enclose an existing stairwell on a non-conforming structure in the Shoreland Overlay District based on section nineteen four four B three of the zoning ordinance. Somebody like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor? All right, the motion has been approved. I'll go down these findings of fact and we can then decide if we need to add anything. This is a request of Sylvain and Sevigny builders representing Candace Warren to rebuild and enclose an existing stairwell on a non-conforming structure in the Shoreland Overlay District based on section nineteen four four B three of the zoning ordinance. The subject property is Eighteen Smugglers Cove Road, MAP U ten, Lot forty-two. Candace Warren is the owner of record for the subject property. Three, Eighteen Smugglers Cove Road is a non-conforming lot in the RE zone. It is also in the Shoreland Overlay District. There is a, there is currently a non-conforming single-family dwelling on the lot. Four, on February twenty-second, two thousand and five, the zoning board of appeals approved the demolition, rebuild, and expansion of this house. Can we just add that the record from that approval is incorporated herein, is incorporated by reference herein? Additional findings of fact. One, the zoning board of appeals has considered the size of the lot, the slope of the land, the potential for soil erosion, the location of other structures on the property and on adjacent properties, the location of the septic system and other on-site soils suitable for septic systems, the impact on views, and the type and amount of vegetation to be removed to accomplish the relocation, to accomplish the reconstruction. Two, the proposed structure will not increase the non-conformity of the existing structure. Three, the proposed structure is in compliance with the setback requirements to the greatest practical extent. Four, the lot coverage in the Shoreland Overlay District is currently non-conforming and will not become more non-conforming. And five, the cumulative expansion of the portions of the structure within seventy-five feet of the normal high water line shall be certified by an architect not to exceed the thirty percent limitation.
Can we amend the end of that to say limitations for floor area and volume?
Let's un-
That's what's in the application and those are the only two. That's what's in the application, and those are the only two that are changing.
Okay, so five will now read, the cumulative expansion of the portions of the structure within 75 feet of the normal high water line shall be certified by an architect not to exceed the 30% limitations for floor area and volume.
And do we, you may have covered it, but do we want to add to that, the proposed floor area will not exceed 2,087.8 square feet?
Isn't that the 30%?
Well, it's not, because that's only 22.8%.
Oh, okay.
That's what's in the application.
So we'll add that. What was the, the proposed floor area shall not?
Proposed, proposed floor area within the 75-foot, uh, Shoreland Overlay setback, I'm sorry, 78-foot of the high water line will not exceed 2,087.8 square feet.
2,087.
087.8, 28 square feet.
So that would be number, additional findings of fact, number six. The proposed floor area within the 75, within 75 feet of the high water line will not exceed 2,087.8 square feet.
Well, the volume is actually a bigger concern for me, because that goes more to kind of what's upward as opposed to the floor area. So does it make sense to amend what was five, to say that the architect will certify that the, the numbers that were given in the application for existing floor area and existing volume will be certified too? Post-construction?
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean?
I mean, didn't, we had the lot...
That addresses our concern over height, right?
Right, but we already had volume.
We have them at 30%.
Okay.
But what's in the application is 22.8% and 29.3%.
Okay.
So that would hold them to the application as opposed to the maximum of 30%.
Okay, so, the cumulative expansion of the portions of the structure within 75 feet of the normal high water line shall be certified by an architect not to exceed...
The limitations presented in the July 8, 2014 application?
That sounds fine to me. Okay, so...
And I think that addresses the height issue as well, which was my bigger concern.
Yeah, so five will be the cumulative expansion of the portions of the structure within 75 feet of the normal high water line shall be certified by an architect not to exceed the limitations presented in the July 8, 2014 application.
Can we say limitations for floor area and volume as presented?
Limitations for floor area and volume.
As presented?
As presented.
In the July 8...
2014 application.
2014.
And are we then striking six?
Yes.
Okay. So let me just read, let me read five again. The cumulative expansion of the portions of the structure within 75 feet of the normal high water line shall be certified by an architect not to exceed the limitations for floor area and volume as presented in the July 8, 2014 application. Any other findings? All in favor? Six, nothing. Thank you, Mr. Sevigny?
Yeah.
I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Or adjourn?